Good evening. I'm Gary Castor, the managing editor of the Jefferson City News Tribune, and welcome to this forum for Ward Two council members in Jefferson City. Let me give you a few of the ground rules that we're going to be talking about tonight with the candidates. The candidates will have the opportunity, there are three candidates, they are seeking one seat in Ward Two. We'll give them an opportunity here in a moment for a one-minute opening statement, and then we will give them a variety of questions that came either from readers or from ourselves. So, before we get all this started, though, I'm reminded that we should stand and do the pledge of allegiance. So, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
So, let me silence my phone first. Forgot to do that. Okay. So, let me introduce our candidates tonight. From left to right, we have Gregory Butler. He's a small business owner in Jefferson City who runs a digital marketing agency. He's originally from Chicago and moved to Jefferson City in 2009, and has lived in Ward Two for about seven years. In the center is Aaron Mealy. He's a Jefferson City native who graduated from Elias Catholic School and attended Lincoln University and the University of Missouri Columbia. He works for the Missouri Department of Social Services and has lived in Ward Two for about seven years. And on the right is Mike Lester. He's lived in Ward Two since he and his wife moved to Jefferson City in 2002. Until he retired in 2013, he worked remotely for the Oklahoma Department of Human Services. He's served on the Jefferson City Planning and Zoning Commission since 2009, and has helped develop several city plans, including the Capitol Avenue, Capitol Area Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, the Historic South Side Old Munichburg District and Neighborhood Plan, and the Jefferson City Historic Preservation Plan. So, thank you, candidates, for coming for the forum tonight. At the table with me is Rebecca Martin, City Editor of the Jefferson City News Tribune. She will serve as co-moderator as well as timekeeper. So, we'll begin with opening statements, and we'll start with Greg.
Thank you. Appreciate the News Tribune for setting this up and allowing us to come speak and introduce ourselves. As Gary stated, I am, my name is Gregory Butler. I am from Chicago, Illinois. I've lived in Jefferson City since 2009, and part of my coming to Jefferson City was to attain my bachelor's degree in marketing and business administration. As I grew in Jefferson City, I started a, or I was co-owner of a rental car agency in Jefferson City called Avison Budget Rental Car. In that business, I've developed a lot of business relationships and personal relationships. And again, throughout that time, I've grew to love Jefferson City because everyone was so receptive and nice, you know? It was totally different than Chicago. And it was safe. And so, as I spent my time in Jefferson City, I've always wanted to do something in the community and help the city grow. And so, that is my passion, is to develop relationships with the city and bring my efforts and my ideas to the city to help the city grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Aaron.
Hi, I'm Aaron Mealy. I'm originally from the Jefferson City area, went graduate of Elias High School in 2005. I want to come here tonight first to thank the audience for being here. I think it's important to, for everybody to be engaged in this process, and I really appreciate it. I want to thank the News Tribune for having us as well. I want to let everyone know in Jefferson City, and especially the Second Ward, that I am committed to you. I'm committed to equal voice, and I believe I have the energy that is required of the city council to represent everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
I'm Mike Lester. I want to thank the News Tribune for hosting this forum, and thank you for coming out to it. I believe in facing issues straight on and working with others to develop solutions to, and then taking action to effectively and efficiently address problems. What got me interested in running for city council is a couple of years ago, I worked with neighbors to try and do something about abandoned, dangerous buildings and traffic safety issues in our neighborhood. And we worked with the city, and we had some success, but it was kind of frustrating. I thought I could be a better advocate for citizens by being on the council. I'm retired, and I have the experience and time to be an effective advocate for solutions to problems that the city faces. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. So, we're going to get started with the questions. As I mentioned earlier, they're going to have two minutes responses. You don't have to use all two minutes, all right? I'll just say that right now. However, you do have that ability. So, we're going to get started. My first question goes, starts with Aaron. This will be, for the audience's purposes, this will be a rotation, so they won't have to answer, each of them will answer all the questions, but they won't have to answer the first question every time. So, Aaron, what are the top two issues facing Ward Two residents, and how would you address them as a council member?
I think we have a great city council right now. I am really proud to live in Jefferson City, and especially after the May tornado, seeing everybody come together, meeting city council members out, helping, helping people move and picking up debris. So, maybe not necessarily issues, but something that, and we've been going around town, town and meeting folks in the Second Ward, and it's been very awesome to meet everybody that I didn't already know. One of the things I think would be important is to open the line of communication more. I am an advocate of bringing the best and the brightest people into the room to make the hard decisions, and to bring in community organizations along with our city council and state partners. So, I think communication would probably be my, more communication would be my biggest thing that I can bring to the table. Another thing I would look at is working on public spaces, improving public spaces. We have a great J.C. Parks in Jefferson City, and I really appreciate everything they do. I would be interested in expanding that, bringing in more outdoor opportunities for children and adults alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
So, I think Jefferson City had an affordable housing problem before the tornado, but I think it's more of a crisis now. I know we were, we lived in the path of the tornado and within our neighborhood, and then the Second Ward was the main one that was affected by the tornado. Fifty, sixty or more houses were just wiped out, and a lot of that's not coming back. And I think affordable housing just needs to be a top priority, and to do that, it's going to take more than the city. We need to work, of course, with the state and the county, and even, and hopefully can use some of the federal money for disaster recovery to help restore some of that housing. I think we've all seen the buildings falling down downtown, and I think those just highlight that we have a problem with buildings like that elsewhere in the city, and most of those deteriorated buildings are in the Second Ward. So, I think that's another issue, the blight that impacts safety, and also the reputation of the city is a serious issue that needs to be addressed.
Okay. Gregory?
The first issue that I've encountered is the awareness and the activity of the constituents. There's a lot of constituents in that, in Ward Two in specific, that are not aware of city issues or city decisions. And so, as a candidate and a citizen of Ward Two, I feel like it is my job to go into the community, to create awareness, to encourage the constituents to come out to the city and vote, and, you know, become aware of, you know, what decisions can be made in the city. The second issue that I've encountered is the revitalization of the tornado. It is a major issue that affected not only the physicality of the area, but the morale. And so, I encourage the, my job is to encourage the constituents that, you know, we are working on repairing and revitalizing the tornado-stricken area. And also, we are looking to, wanted to create some economic development for those spaces that have been torn down, and that cannot, you know, the houses that cannot be repaired. So, but again, education is, and awareness is one of the biggest issues I've encountered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's a good segue to our next question, the tornado. As you all know, Jefferson City experienced a tornado a year ago, or going on a year ago. How would you assess the city's response to the tornado immediately after the storm, as well as months later during the recovery? What should be the city's priority for recovery in the coming months and year? And we will start with Mike.
So, the response immediately after tornado was fantastic. Both the city and the residents, and people who came from outside, but the city, you know, the fire and the police were out, and other workers of the city were out helping and removing debris and helping people. So, it was quite something. And I think since then, of course, there's things that were known, the community, Central Missouri Community Action Agency held a task force, and all the city, main city departments that were involved were represented there, and the state economic development was there. And I think it's going to take all those groups working together to repair and recover from the tornado. It's going to be a longer-term process. I know a lot of the recovery, emergency recovery funds haven't come in yet, but those need to be used wisely to build the city back up.
Gregory?
I would, as far as the immediate response after tornado, I think it was really great. It inspired me because I saw how the city came together to help those that were affected by the tornado. And, you know, I haven't seen that at all before, and so, just to see how the city responded to that was, immediately was inspirational and motivational to me to want to help and do the same thing. Right now, what I believe, what's going on in the area is, it is a progress, slowly but surely, there is progress. And the city council has made decisions to improve these areas on Capitol Street and Jackson Street. And so, I want to be, I believe that they have done a great job with that, but I feel that as a candidate, and the ideas that I have, we can bring that to the forefront of the tornado-stricken areas, so that way, we can have something established for the constituents in that area. Thank you.
And Aaron?
Sure. The response of Jefferson City is one of the reasons I'm here tonight. Being firsthand the morning after the tornado, and meeting so many remarkable people in our town, and seeing the response, and how helpful and generous people are in Jefferson City, made me want to be a part of something bigger and represent the, just amazing people I saw, and, you know, helping and volunteering and advocating in the aftermath of the May 2019 tornado. As far as moving forward, we have a lot of work to do, and I'm here to do it. I think that we can gather community partners and bring them together. We need to advocate, and I think I am the person that is going to be able to advocate and bring those community partners to the table and make those decisions that benefit Jefferson City and our residents. Thank you.
All right. And the next question, and this will start with Greg. In the aftermath of the tornado, a housing problem Jefferson City already had became much worse to the point that it's now been labeled a housing crisis. What could or should the city do to address the availability of affordable housing for low-to-middle-income families?
Well, the response actually needs to be, I believe we need to move a little bit faster in re-establishing these homes in these tornado-stricken areas. But the fact that there was an issue with the housing, you know, the rent went up when this happened, which was a devastation to the constituents because they had to pile up in these houses that were not as livable as it was before. And so, they kind of, it did upset me in a way, because I felt like it was unfair. But I think we need to continue to establish, you know, some structure in affordable housing, and also, again, move fast in getting these houses rebuilt in these areas, so that way, the constituents can move back into those communities where they grew up, you know? So, I believe in that.
Okay. Aaron?
Sure. Thank you. Affordable housing was definitely something that the council was looking at before the tornado. The tornado exacerbated some of the affordable housing availability in Jefferson City. I just want to let you all know tonight that affordable housing is primary in my campaign. I will work on the city council to identify new innovative methods to increase affordable housing and availability in Jefferson City. Thank you.
Mike?
So, it's, a lot of housing was lost. It's going to take a while to get that housing back, and it's very important that we do everything we can is to work on this right away. At that housing task force meeting, people from Columbia were there, and they talked about what others had done related to affordable housing. We need to look at what other places have done to get the housing back when tornado or something like that has happened. I know Habitat, Humanity had had individuals from job income and talk about what, how they had increased the housing and resources for housing through Habitat. I know Steve Crowe at that task force meeting, the city manager, basically said, said whatever it takes, and I think that's the right attitude for the city to bring the housing that we need back, because the people that lost their housing, they'd be the left, or they're homeless, or some of them are in housing that's much more expensive than the housing that they were in before the tornado. So, I would certainly, on the council, work with others to increase the housing in the area.
Okay. So, I'm going to do a follow-up with this, because I think everyone in the city would say, yes, we need to address housing, but let's get into the weeds a little bit, what specifically you believe the city should be doing? And I'm going to preface it by this question from a reader, Frank Rysak, who had this question for us to ask you, that may be part of that answer. Do you have any plans to modify housing density regulations to make housing more affordable? Again, the question was, do you have any plans to modify housing density regulations to make housing more affordable? And I guess my question was, is yes or no unto that, but then what are your other plans? And so, we'll start back with Greg again.
Yes. That is, again, a part of my campaign plank, is to look into establishing some regulations for affordable housing. One of the things in that plan is creating some sort of economic development. So, what I believe Jefferson City needs is more good-paying jobs and sustainable jobs for residents in the community to actually afford and maintain these homes. And so, I believe in that wholeheartedly, that that's something that Jefferson City needs. And so, I want to, you know, put that together with affordable housing, so that way, we can have something established to help the city grow. Thank you.
Aaron?
As far as the modifying the housing density regulations, I would definitely, as a council member, want to do my due diligence in looking at what are, all of our options are on the city council. We want to be in compliance with state and federal law in doing what we do and the decisions that we make, so we can move down the road, be more cost-effective, and be a good steward of the taxpayers' dollar in Jefferson City. I think there are a lot of holistic options to look at, bringing in the experts, to engaging the experts as a city council member, inviting folks to speak to us, and gathering as much information as possible. Those would all be things that I would want to do in, in working on the, on affordable housing in Jefferson City. Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, I think, I think we should look at that, the change, looking at whether density or modifications of regulations are needed. I know what was talked about with something like mini houses, which are smaller, much more affordable, but of adequate size for, for a small family or few people. And I know our current regulations, a lot of sizes maybe wouldn't be appropriate, so maybe in some part of the cities, some of that could be looked at. I know, I think that's what Mr. Crowe was talking about, and talking about doing anything that we could do to make more housing that's affordable, available. So, certainly, I look at that, but look at it carefully, and also look at what, what the impact was in other places.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The next question, we'll start with Aaron. How business-friendly is Jefferson City for development, and what could the city do to improve the climate for attracting new business?
Thank you for that question. So, I want folks here tonight know that I am an advocate of small business in Jefferson City and business in general. I think Jefferson City is business-friendly. I think we have a great community. We have a lot of businesses owned by residents of Jefferson City, and I think that is a great thing. I think that is something that makes our city more prosperous in general. As far as moving forward, as city council leader, I would look at opportunities and maybe other, other communities, and inventive, innovative, rather, ways that other communities have brought in ideas to expand on business. Thank you.
Mike?
I would just say that likewise, I think we need to look at what others have done. I know currently, the city Chamber of Commerce is looking at their planning and redevelopment development, and looking at other consultants, and I think it's good to reach out and look at what other places have done, have done, and have been successful. And so, I think Jefferson City is welcoming and has, is supportive of small businesses, and, but we probably look at what others have done and do more.
Okay. Gregory?
I believe the climate is actually good in Jefferson City. They have opened a lot of doors to small business owners, me being one. What I believe also, I think there's, there needs to be more diversity of businesses in Jefferson City. Different types of industries should be welcomed to the city, which will attract professional, young professionals in the city. And so, as, as my job as city councilman, I would speak with the Chamber of Commerce, the young professionals in specific, to see what ideas they have, and what we could do to implement that in our plan for the city to bring those jobs or those businesses here in Jefferson City. Thank you.
All right. Next question, we'll start with Mike. When it comes to infrastructure, how would you rate the condition of Jefferson City's streets? Do you believe more funds should be spent on streets? And if so, how would the funds be used, and from where would the money come?
Well, I can say from, from my canvassing, that streets are one of the main thing that I hear from residents, the deteriorated and potholed streets in the neighborhoods, and it seems even more so in the Second Ward are a big problem. And so, yes, I think prioritizing the streets is something that needs to have a higher priority in the budgeting. As far as the money and where you get it, yeah, I think, I don't know if there's going to be more money. It may be prioritizing and reducing money spent elsewhere. I'm not sure. But streets are definitely an issue that's come up more than anything else in talking with residents.
Okay. So, and I'm going to be that pesky reporter, so what areas have too high of a priority? I mean, where would the money come from? From your, recognizing all three of you, your vantage point, that you have not sat through a budget, one committee meeting with the council, but as a resident of Ward Two, where do you believe money would come from to fix streets?
Well, that's tough, because the streets, yeah, to do, to work on streets takes, takes a big amount of money. So, and the city's facing a lot of, lot of pressures right now, even more so from the So, I'm not, I'm not sure. You're right, I haven't, I haven't sat through budgeting, but, and there are many, many pressures to spend, there are many needs. But streets, everyone I've talked to, besides saying the streets are a problem, is that they seem to have gotten worse in the last couple of years. So, I don't know, I don't know really why that is, but that's, that's a common complaint. Again, I'd, I'd have to look carefully at the budget, because I don't know offhand what, what could be cut.
Okay. Greg?
So, there are many streets that need to be fixed. That is factual. But where the damages come from is normally the stormwater. And so, I believe that we would have to mitigate the stormwater, so, you know, to make sure that that infrastructure's in place to prevent any further damage to our streets. And so, once that infrastructure is in place, I believe that we can prioritize the city streets and have those repaired. Where the money would come from, I'm not 100% sure. That's something I would have to do my research on, but I do understand and know that that is an issue that we have to look at clearly, for sure. And that would be my job as city councilman. Thank you.
Okay. But again, from your perspective as Ward Two, and Aaron must say the same thing to you when we get to that point, infrastructure costs a lot of money. Stormwater costs a lot of money. This, the previous council wrangled with it for a long time. So, if you're promising that streets are going to be an important thing to fix, where's the money coming from?
Again, that's something that I would have to look into, because I haven't sat through a budget meeting. But that would be one of my priorities, is to make sure I know where we can get those funds, and utilize those funds to, you know, help the city or, you know, rebuild the streets. Thank you.
Aaron?
Sure. Thank you for that question. That's a very important question, actually. In out, talking to folks in Ward Two in Jefferson City, that's something that is very important to people, and it's very important to me. If I'm on the city council, that's definitely a part of Jefferson City that I will focus on. As far as the working on streets, I think we need to do it in a very innovative way. Again, I think we need to bring in a lot of, you know, the best minds and the folks who are experts in the field, and discuss ways we can be more innovative in our approach to fixing streets. As far as the funding, which you've asked my two opponents, if we want to look at the fact that streets are vitally important to our residents, and we have other funding streams that we think we could, you know, they're over-budgeted or something, we could look at reducing a funding stream in another area to expand on our streets and, and make them safer and better to drive on for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Such as?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Such as what funding streams? Again, it, it becomes a value question here, right? What, what is the most important thing? If, if you identify streets are important, where are some areas? is the most important thing? If you identify streets are important, where are some areas you think we should be looking to improve?
That's right. So I would have to identify with other council members, and citizens, primarily in Jefferson City, of things that are funded that have additional budget that we could use to put towards something that matters more to our citizens.
Okay.
So the next question actually was submitted prior to tonight's forum by a community member, Jeff Holzum. St. Louis, Kansas City, and seven other Missouri cities committed to provide 100% of their electricity from renewable sources. Kansas City plans to do so within three years. Columbia has set a goal of providing 15% of the city's electricity from renewable sources by 2017. They exceeded that goal and set higher goals. What actions would you support to begin moving Jefferson City to renewable electricity? We'll start with Mike.
Start with Greg.
Oh, I apologize. With Greg.
Oh, with Greg. Okay. So we do understand that that is something of the future that we would have to embrace, which is, you know, solar panels or windmills. So I definitely encourage, I would encourage the city to make sure that we get involved with that. One of the things that I believe we can do with these companies that provide the renewable energy or solar panels or whatnot, have some incentive programs for them to want to come and provide that to us and give the city, the constituents, some sort of a break to purchase the equipment because it is quite expensive. But I believe that that's something that we should look into right now so we can make sure that when we do cross over to renewable electricity, that we are prepared for that. And so, again, as a city councilman, that's something that I would dedicate time to, to make sure we can have a great plan for that change. Thank you.
Erin?
Thank you for the question. Very important topic. In order to take Jefferson City on a path of renewable energy, I think we need to do that. I think that's important. We need to work in a cost-effective manner, investing upfront, so we can be more, we can be better stewards of the taxpayer dollar down the road. This is the direction of the future. This is the direction of energy. Any industry will talk about that and explain that. And so we have to look at what we can invest in to be better suited down the road and for our next generation. And I would definitely look at working on city buildings, like the one we're in tonight, and the renewable energy and electricity options available. Again, I'll say it, I think what a city can do that's really good and really thought out is to look at folks who have done this before, identify successes they've had, and identify things that haven't worked well for other communities. Thank you.
Mike?
So I would just say that Jefferson City is behind in this area, and what these other cities are doing just makes good sense in terms of reducing carbon footprint, but also fiscally, it makes sense. I just put some solar panels on my home, and they're 30-year panels, but they'll pay for themselves in 10 to 12 years. And so it just makes fiscal sense to go this route. I met with the Vicentennial Bridge Committee and recommended that they use solar and wind generation into the bridges' construction. Again, I think that makes sense to generate the energy that would be needed for the park service on Adrian Island. But the city has a lot of rooftops, and it just makes sense that they do solar and generate energy. Columbia has a sustainability plan, and I think Jefferson City should look at that and develop their own sustainability plan and look at all their buildings for making them more energy-efficient and generating energy from solar and maybe even wind.
All right. All right, gentlemen. Start with Erin. I've got another budget question for you. I promise it's the luck of the draw here on this altering between Rebecca and I. All right, the Fraternal Order of Police has asked the police personnel board to increase officer salaries, saying the salaries are not competitive and have led to turnover in the police department and fewer years of experience in the force. What would you support raising the pay for officers? And if so, how would you propose to pay for it? And we start with Erin.
Thank you for that question. Again, a very important topic, a very important question. As far as salaries of police officers and other public servants in our community, I think those are vitally important. I think what we can do is be in support now of well-thought-out salaries that are sustainable for people and their families. And then, what we do is we create a situation where we maintain retention, and that can potentially be more cost-effective for us down the road. We don't have to hire and go through the process multiple times. So I am in favor of supporting our police officers and their families with their salary, absolutely. As far as the proposal to pay for it, again, we are going to examine every expenditure that the city has. We're going to identify areas that might be overbudgeted or areas we can improve on, and we are going to support our police officers. We can do that, and I think we can make it happen. I'd like to be a part of that on the council to make that happen.
Mike?
So, yes, I think the union certainly has a point. They've looked at what compared what other cities are paying and we're really in competition kind of with Columbia. And it just makes sense to retain your officers and not have to train new people. And as Erin said, it may make for the budget even more sense to raise the salary so you save on some of those other expenses. Where do you find the money? You know, I don't know. You know, I will say, related to this question and the other, I have heard from people that I've talked to, that the city and these other people's opinions, who they say, talked to experts, that the city on some big projects have overspent by quite a bit, in their opinion. Now, I don't know. That's something that certainly I'd want to investigate for myself. But it's that type of thing where you want to be most efficient in your expenditures. You don't want to buy shabby things, but you don't want to overspend. And so, that's certainly an area that I would look at.
All right. Gregory?
Yes, I'm absolutely in favor of that. They risk their lives for us every day to make us safe, so I believe that they should be rewarded for that. So what I would do is look at, you know, programs in the city that are overfunded and see how we can be more effective and efficient with those programs, so we can have some money freed up for the police officers. What I would do with the officers is survey to see what's more sustainable for them to, what their income would be for them to live in Jefferson City, and see if we can come to an agreement on what works for them. But again, I would get the funding from other programs that are overfunded and apply that to raising the salary for the police officers. Thank you.
Quick follow-up question, just a short answer from all three of you. So one option that has not been raised, but some communities do, is a public safety sales tax. Assuming that the council that you would be joining has done its due diligence and has cut every penny out of every other budget, and you needed another resource, would you be in favor of some sort of dedicated tax for public service? Start with Erin.
So in that hypothetical situation, which I don't believe exists in Jefferson City, I think we can identify areas where funds are available. So I would like to answer that a little bit differently, if that's okay. I, in general, am not in favor of raising taxes on our residents. Our residents pay taxes, and we, as a governing body and a public servant to our residents, need to be a good steward with those taxpayer dollars. I think with the current tax rate, we can, again, identify areas and we can make funding work for everybody and the priorities and programs that we have.
Okay. Mike?
I would have to study it. I don't, you know, you say some places have done that type of tax. I don't know. I would generally think we should stay with our current tax system and find the money. Certainly, the police and the fire are core, basic services that we need to fund adequately and retain the people we've trained and are doing a good job. I mean, I would look at that, but I really don't know. I'd have to see what, how that has worked out and why they went that route in the other places that have done that.
Okay. Gregory?
I wouldn't give that the first option. I would look into the existing funding programs that we have funded to see if there is a way where we can cut costs or funding in some of these programs. Now, given the chance that doesn't work, this is another option that we can propose. And so, but we would have to have some type of agreement with the city and the citizens to see what works for everyone. Because, again, that's a very important piece of our city, so we definitely would have to do our due diligence and look into that to see what we can do to benefit everyone. Thank you.
Next question, we'll go first to Mike. A dispute has arisen recently between military veterans who are trying to expand the Jefferson City National Cemetery and neighbors who oppose losing their city park as part of the expansion. The Parks Commission has proposed creating two smaller parks near the neighborhood so the national cemetery could be expanded. At this time, the proposal is awaiting authorization from the Veterans Administration. Ultimately, if the VA approves the expansion, the council would vote on if the park land should be used for the expansion. How would you vote and why?
So, if this is going to happen, whatever is done in replace of the current park would need to be much better than what currently is this. My understanding right now is really what's being discussed will be less land for a park. And there's some other issues. I recognize the cemetery needs expansion, and it needs a lot more expansion probably than what that park can offer, what area is there. But I understand the need for it. It's certainly there. But likewise, that park has served the community. It's there and is valuable to it. If it's going to be replaced, it needs to be replaced with something better than what was currently planned, and they were going to improve that park already. But I know you have to take into account that you're talking about what basically was part of the community that's been removed. The basic business area was removed, the foot area. And we need to make sure that there's some healing that happens in this whole process.
So to bring a very long question back to the end, based on the proposal as it stands right now, can you say how you would vote on it?
Right now, as I understand it, I wouldn't vote in favor of it because I think what's been offered as the park replacement isn't adequate.
Thank you. Gregory?
So, this is a big issue in that community. There's a lot of unhappy citizens that, you know, they don't want to see that park go away because it has some significance in that area. And it provides something to the people that live in that area. So I wouldn't be in favor of moving the park because we don't want to, we want to think consciously of the people that want to be in that area. And so I think it's very important that we appease them because they represent that area. So if we can look at another area where we can put the cemetery, that would be of some significance. I think that's something that we can do. But I wouldn't be in favor of moving the park.
Thank you. And Erin?
Sure. Thank you. The cemetery, along with the park, I have mentioned earlier, being an advocate for outdoor areas for adults and children in our community. Our national cemetery is very important to me. I've done work there at the caretaker's house in helping restore that home. It is a, the issue that you've brought up is a Ward One issue in Jefferson City, and I am running for the Second Ward City Council. So what I would do first with other members of the council is to work with them and what they've identified, listen to who they've spoke with, and make an informed decision based on that. So I would definitely want to have open communication amongst the council, work with the council members who do represent that area, and come to a decision based on bringing in community members and folks who care about the issue, and whether that's in public meetings, but being there, even if it is outside my ward, to work with the council that do represent Ward One, and coming to a conclusion that is suitable for both sides.
Since I did this to Mike, I'll do it to you as well. This is an issue that would come before the whole council. So based on the proposal as it is right now and the information that's out there, are you able to make a decision?
I'm not. I don't have enough information. Again, I would want to work with, in an open line of communication, as we've discussed, pulling in, you know, everybody on the council, but especially Ward One council members. So I would have to discuss. I would have to learn and make an educated decision. So at this time, I don't.
And one more follow-up. Give me one more. Is there any specific information you feel like is lacking right now for the council to make that decision?
I don't know that there's any information lacking, but once again, I would want to hear what information has been gathered equally from all folks that are very concerned, as I am, you know, with that decision being made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gregory, we'll start with you on this one. The Human Rights Campaign Foundation annually compiles municipal equality index scorecards to measure LGBT rights and protections in cities across the nation. Jefferson City received a score of 31 out of 100 in 2019. Part of the low score is a lack of municipal nondiscrimination laws for employment, housing, and public accommodation. Is this an issue the council should address? And if so, what would you do as a council member to see that it happens?
Yeah, I think it's something that the city should address because we want to make sure that everyone feels that they can be a part of the city and that they are accepted. And so, that's something that I would want to invest some time in, to make sure that if they're going to live in our city and pay taxes, we want to make sure that they are represented well and that they are welcome. And so, again, it is something that I would look into, see what I can do to better that relationship with that community so that we can all have a better place to live in Jefferson City. Thank you.
All right. Erin?
Thank you for the question. My campaign, me personally, I would work with the council and the community to have equal investment, equal representation in all people. I think that's very important in Jefferson City. And with a score like that, and getting to the point of your question, as far as municipal nondiscrimination laws, as a city council member, we will look at those. We will work on ways to make Jefferson City a community that works for all folks. Everybody feels invested and equally served. That is, I was telling somebody the other day, that's very important to me. If there is anybody in Jefferson City who walks up to me and says, "I'm not being heard," or "I don't, you know, feel comfortable," that makes me, in general, just sad. And that may not be the most professional way to say that, but it really does. And so I am a leader and a listener and somebody who would work on the council to promote fairness for everyone.
Mike?
Yes, obviously, the score indicates that we have work to do, and our language and our ordinance should certainly be such that discourages any discrimination.
Next question, we will start with Aaron. The state of Missouri has conveyed 32 acres of Missouri, Missouri State Penitentiary land to the city. The city is pursuing development of the site at this time and has two proposals under consideration. Which proposal would you support or choose and why?
Thank you. Jefferson City is very lucky, and I think we're also very grateful to, to be able to have that land that was once owned by the state of Missouri. So, I commend the work of the city council and the mayor on making that happen and want to thank everybody involved for that. I think that the revitalization of the MSP property is something that can be very financial, financially beneficial to our residents of Jefferson City. We're talking about revenue streams. We can look at something like that to fund programs that really matter to people. As far as the two proposals, I would like to do more research on them. I'm about getting a, all the information that I can and making an educated and informed decision. So, I'm not going to mention maybe tonight which proposal, but that is something that, that I'm looking at, and, and I hope the proposal that is best for Jefferson City, that would be the proposal that I would support.
Mike?
For the proposals, the two that were presented, one seemed to be more fleshed out as far as a visionary in terms of development of, of that acreage and with projected convention center and museum and, and other development in the area, whereas the other one did not seem to really develop it much except for paths and exercise areas, open areas, and, and was really geared toward enhancing a current project going on away from that site. So, so, I definitely, with the proposals that are out there, out there currently, I, I'm in favor of that one that really has a vision for the area and, and development immediately and, and in the future.
And for people who may be less familiar with the two proposals, can you be more specific about which one?
Well, I can't, I can't remember the, the names of the entities. I know, so I, I'm not for the farmer's proposal.
The Chesterfield Group?
The Chesterfield Group is, is the one that I thought really developed, or had a vision for developing the area, the way it was envisioned by the council when they put it out there.
Gregory?
That's something that I would also have to do some research, research on to see what is more beneficial to the city. Of course, as I stated before, I am for economic development and creating streams of revenue for the city so that we can use those streams for other programs of economic development or anything that would be beneficial to the city. And so, based off what I believe I heard from Mike, the first one where it's more of a vision, if that is more economical and beneficial to all of us, that's one that I would be in favor for. But again, I would have to do my research to make sure that it is beneficial. Thank you.
All right. Folks, this will probably be our last question. Jefferson City Parks has a dedicated sale, half-cent sales tax with no sunset provision. At times, that sales tax has come under fire. Do you support this tax and how the funds have been used? And we start with Mike.
Yes, I support the tax. I think it's, it's one of the really great attributes of Jefferson City that we have, have parks that are really nice and distributed around the city, and I, I like that the parks have done a master plan, and I look forward to the further development of the parks here in the city. I think they couldn't, they couldn't do that without having the dedicated tax to do that type of planning and, and for the future, and I think it's going to enhance Jefferson City tremendously and, and attract people and keep young professionals here that we need to do. And so, yes, I'm in favor of that current tax and what's being done with it.
Gregory?
I feel the same. I would be for it because we want to see Jefferson City grow, and again, it, it will attract young professionals to want to settle here, not just visit. And so, anything that will attract progression, I am definitely for. I want to make sure that it is sufficient and it, it is beneficial to everyone, but I believe in the growth and the attraction, that, and the opportunity that Jefferson City has. So, if it will promote Jefferson City in a better light, then that's something I would definitely be in favor for. Thank you.
All right. Aaron?
Thank you for the question. Jefferson City Parks and Recreation have consistently been good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and I want to congratulate them on that. Over the years, it's been a very consistent thing. I think that the amount of, of sales tax that, that JCParks collects substantially outweighs, or rather, the, the good that JCParks does for the community and the revenue streams that the, that the city has from JCParks substantially outweighs the sales tax. So, I appreciate the residents being very supportive of Jefferson City Parks, as am I, and I think I'm looking forward to working on expanding parks and, and with the, the funding that we have and working with those folks. So, thank you.
All right. So, we'll begin with our closing statements, and we'll start with Gregory.
Yes. So, again, I, I thank you guys for coming out to listen to us. This is very informal, and I am dedicated to actually support, to serving you guys because this is a service position. And so, my job is to continue to build relationships with the constituents and see what we can do to work together to make sure that we make Jefferson City a better place for all of us to live. And so, I would definitely appreciate your support if you want to speak with me. I am available at any time because I believe in the transparency of government, and I want to deal with all of you. And I thank you again for listening to me today, and I hope I've won your support. Thank you.
Aaron?
Yes, thank you again for, for having me here tonight and being here, and I think this is great that Jefferson City is, one of the great attributes of Jefferson City is how engaged we are in our community, expanding and creating an environment for our next generation. So, I, I appreciate the support. I look forward to April 7th and would appreciate your vote. I have information up here. I have cards out in the lobby on my priorities, and I'm always available to speak with anyone. But I have information up here on my email address and my cell phone. Again, I'm always available to speak with, with anybody, and thank you very much.
Mike?
I want to represent you on the city council. I'm retired and have the experience and time to dedicate to advocate for solutions to problems facing our city. And together, I think we can make Jefferson City a better place to live and work and play. And so, I just encourage you to vote for me on April 7th. Thank you.
All right. So, I have a few thank yous I'd like to share. First of all, thank you to the candidates for coming out for the forum and, and enduring our questions. I had promised them before the forum that we'd be sending them more questions that we didn't get to tonight. Those questions and those answers will appear in Sunday's edition of the News Tribune, so that's my shameless plug to pick up a copy of Sunday's News Tribune. I'd like to thank the city for the use of the chambers here for this forum, as well as JCTV for videoing it for us and streaming it on their, their station, as well as our, streaming it on the newstribune.com. My parting comment is, April 7th is an important election. I would encourage folks to research the candidates, but to get out and vote. You have a right to do that, and these gentlemen have invested a lot of time on the campaign trail to earn your vote, so go exercise your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.